All right, everyone is here, you're recording. Good evening, it's seven at two, I'm going to pivot over tomorrow to do the opening verbiage just as a little clock bit, okay? So, we're on here. Yeah, okay. As the vice chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present. School committee members. Yeah. Student representatives, do we have them?
I have Kaylee.
Okay, Kaylee, can you hear me?
Great teens.
Okay. Staff, we have Colleen and Brian and Chuck and Liz York. And then we have Wayne, can you hear us?
Yes.
See if there's anybody else.
There's nobody else.
And Carol. Thank you.
Okay, all right. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as a hybrid meeting as allowed by CHAD to act 2023, signed into law by Governor Bealley on March nine, twenty nine, two thousand twenty three. This act continues to exempt certain provisions under open meeting law regarding remote meetings and public access until March thirty fifth, two thousand twenty five. This committee is convening via Zoom and in person, as posted on the district's website. While an option for remote attendance and or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast to remote attendees unless otherwise required by law. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. If you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting, please use the raise your hand function now to notify the chair now as required by law. Along with this agenda, most of tonight's meeting materials are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in a folder titled title twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four agendas. Under the tab, School Committee, the public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the chair notes otherwise. Public comments. Public comments agenda item is a devoted title of school committee to hear from the public. As such, its structure primarily supports a unidirectional reporting of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Here are the general rules for any form of public comment period. Any person wishing to speak and make comments during a virtual meeting may do so by signing up to speak publicly in advance and up until agenda item. Read this link.
No, I'm reading the agenda.
Please have your Zoom name match so that we may be able to unmute you to speak. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard. No person may comment more than once without permission of the chair. As time allows, the chair could consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if it is related to a topic that has not been brought up. Any person wishing to submit written comments to be read by the chair may do so by emailing comments in advance to up until the public comment agenda item to comments for number four. S C meeting at maynard.k twelve dot M A W S. The subject line must state public comment. This, please include your first and last name and your town to ensure your comments are read. Comments will only be read for three minutes. If the submitted comments are longer, they will be suspended at the three minute mark. To ensure all comments can be read in their entirety, it is suggested that you keep them to approximately three hundred and fifty words. However, submitted comments longer than three hundred and fifty words are included in the public record in their entirety. Note, anyone wishing to submit a comment for the public record after the public comments agenda has passed can do so by emailing comments to the same email address up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground levels for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce, I should say, Tasha will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. She will ask each member if they have any comments, questions, or motions that they would like to be. She'll go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold off speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the chair and take care not to interrupt any kind of speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by, I guess, not a roll call vote because we're all here, so. And we don't need to do roll call, do digital meeting order at seven o'clock. Maybe very much more out here. Urgent business.
No word.
Right, we're at a law, public comments, I mean, no comments. All right, and there's a virtual, so wonderful. We're at a law, Kaylee, our student members, everyone, good evening.
Hi. So, starting with our highlights, DECA States was the seventh to the ninth. We had eight students attend and one advance. This student will attend the International Career Development Conference in Anaheim, California in April. M A S C Hyannis was a success. We had nine students attend and come back with fresh ideas for student council. The girls' basketball team made it to the Elite Eight. They fought a hard battle, but unfortunately did not advance. Advisory on March thirteenth went well. Lego advisory featured a challenge to build the best figure with wings possible, and the winner won a Dunkin's gift card. We had the character assembly today, G block for underclassmen and F block for upperclassmen. No One Eats Alone lunch took place on Wednesday and had a good turnout. Senior pizza party was today and was great. Almost everyone in the class joined to grab a slice. Concerns and solutions. Our only concern and solution was lunch. Pizza has not been great. Vegetarians have not been eating lunch at all. We are planning to do a survey for food preference and meet with Ms. Mistlechang next week. But in the week ahead, we're gonna have the question, or we're gonna have parents, suggest parents have a conversation with the student about whether they are eating their lunches or not. Students did not know about the availability of the gluten-free bread, and we will need to advise it in the week ahead. For upcoming, we have spring sports next week. The Annie musical will be this weekend. We have a half day on Friday, the schedule is B D E G. Spirit Week will start on, will also start next week, and the themes are Twin Day for Monday, Travel Tuesday, Ski vs Surf on Wednesday, Celebrity Character Day on Thursday, and Black and Orange and Anything Better Backpack on Friday.
Beautiful, thank you for the updates. I'll go through, Mary.
Nope, thank you very much, Kaylee, appreciate all the feedback.
Yeah, same, thank you.
Mara? The character assembly, so the the lowerclassmen had had one, the upperclassmen had one, so it was two different speakers?
No, it was the same speaker, but juniors and seniors went first for F block, and then he presented again during G block for.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, I was just wondering, for the No One Eats Alone lunch, did people seem to participate in that and like it? And or how how was that actually carried, received in practice?
I know a couple people attended, I know a couple people who attended, rather. I'm not sure the exact count, but I'm, I believe it was a relatively low number, but still a successful turnout for what they were hoping for.
Thanks. I just wanted to mention, I know we had at our last meeting, the food service from Winston's, and I don't know if maybe anyone has had an opportunity to look at that, maybe go back to that meeting and and look to see if there's any feedback, or I just don't, sorry, vegetarian options are continuing to be an issue, so please keep us updated on this for me. And, and you know, as you always do, and I do think it's important to make sure that no one's obviously missing, but not the best way to capture that. But I think that would be, it was a good question, I think for anyone who, they don't have an option, and then maybe they're not saying that's the concern. The other one I wanted to do was about, I think that you all were sick with the app, maybe at the next meeting, I don't know, I think the staff was using the stuff that apps that were scheduling.
By design.
By design?
Yeah, the teachers were just trained this week.
Oh, okay. It'd be good to get an update, I know it's been a little bit since.
We don't have one yet.
Oh, wait, maybe it's on the same one, I think it is, it is, okay. When is that one starting?
The teachers just got trained this week.
Okay.
So, the students slowly started, have the students happen. But teachers haven't really started using.
Okay, I missed that part, Eric, okay, thank you. So, I guess we'll look forward to getting updates on on that by design, so the teachers are on board with that. And the other thing I just wanted to mention was there was some conversations that are, we think, stuff of teachers, and I don't know how much they used to be stable to be triple down, but we are, we have postponed pursuing that at the annual term meeting instead, or pushing it to the fall term meeting. And I know it's just trying to get the town, you know, really behind this project as much as possible, so I think same opportunities of time, education is really what's needed, so we can pass. But I just wanted to make sure there's any questions or concerns that, that you know, that the school council, you know, please relay those are, because we're still, we'll steam ahead as much as possible. Okay?
Okay, just to clarify, well, does this mean the project and the building itself will be postponed, or?
It means that we are still, we've already committed funds in the design, so that is still in the works. It's just the funding to secure or construction things is what we, we're in that, and all the path of everything will come it will be at the special. So that will give all of our other peer boards time to look over to sound that this community to feel comfortable with what that financial commitment is. I think we are still also pursuing an application for this, so maybe, you know, some other funding sources to lessen the burden on residents as much as possible. But I just want to make sure that, you know, our student body knows that we are still a thousand percent committed to the project. It is not changing in the scope of how we're moving forward, but it is not going to start any earlier than when we can secure funding, so the funding won't happen any earlier than than the fall.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I know it's a lot, it was a lot of conversations, a lot of people involved in it, and so I just want to make sure that you all, you all can have to share what those questions or concerns are as they arise.
Oh, Mary, I just, I had a question, Kaylee, do you have thoughts? We heard a little bit from Principal York before the meeting started, the character assembly that you talked about. Are you comfortable? I'm sorry, are you comfortable sharing your thoughts?
Oh, yeah, I thought he was very well spoken. I've seen a lot of motivational speakers, many of which I've not really been interested in, but I thought he did a pretty good job keeping the audience engaged. And I was grateful that it was, I was worried it would be similar to a lot of other presentations I've heard. There's usually a lot of overlap, but I actually found his presentation interesting, and there are a lot of points that I liked, and I thought I was glad that he shared.
Thank you.
Kaylee, thank you for sharing, everybody, as always, you're more than welcome to hang around, but I appreciate your participation wherever possible, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian, a super superintendent report, sorry.
Sure, great, hi, everybody. I was, before the meeting, I, as I sat down, it just dawned on me how many exciting things are happening around Maynard Public Schools. Just recently, it's been really busy, but luckily it's been a fun busy, so I'm sort of, actually, I'm not all spread, but because I realized we have the Reading Across America for Green Meadow, and they have Bingo, for books, they went out right now. So that's going on right now, but the Reading Across America has been a kind of fun, teachers and administrators have gone over to the Green Meadow and been able to read. I had a blast reading to a second grade classroom as well, and the kids love it, which sometimes you don't probably know, but only enough, because I found it comical. This little girl went home and said to her mom, it was the greatest day ever, the superintendent read it to us. And it was good, you know, it was a lot of fun, so.
Next time you have a bad day, go back and.
I think so. But I know that lots of, you know, Chuck and I know other principals within the district had the same type of experience when they went down and read this week. And some of them went down multiple times, because it's just, as Mary said, when you're not having a great day, that's the opportunity to go down. You just feel that the kids are great, so that's just one thing that was happening. Come back to that. Back, Kaylee mentioned the varsity basketball team, the girls' team, they did lose to West Boylston, but they had a phenomenal season. They performed well at the Clark Tournament, and then they went even further in the state tournament, so hats off to the girls varsity basketball team. Just did a really, really great job. March is interesting, our budget is kind of on hold. We know where our budget's at, town knows where our budget's at. I know the town administrator today, and there's no change in the numbers. In fact, the amount of free cash went up a little bit, and when I say that, that doesn't indicate that our budget's going up at all. But there's a little more money that he has access to for other things, and it indicates that he won't have to go and owe any money from the school, but so I take that as a positive thing. The solar project, which I think has been talked about since the building has been designed, it's almost done. And luckily, we've been pushing and making that come to fruition, and if you have the opportunity to drive, but they've been, Select's done a really nice job of putting in the steel foundations and the canopy, and I don't know if it's at a hundred percent. When I was there today, it looked about eighty percent or so, maybe eighty-five percent done in terms of the solar panels on top of the canopy, but they're doing a really nice job. So it's, it's just exciting to see it come to fruition. I mean, from, so we have bi-weekly meetings with Select and our consultant and town administrator, et cetera, and Principal York, so the anticipation is, and some of this is outside our control, is July. It'll be energized and functioning, but they're doing their part. They will wait until April break to do the trench work, so that they want to be able to trench it, do the work, and then repave it on the same day, because it goes across the entrance way. So that's connected to timing with our programming and the asphalt pits in the country. And then the one thing, again, that's outside our control, it'd be Upper Source. So then we get into a key one there, system, and then actually be the ones to hit the button, so we're hoping no one to speak July. But super exciting that it's where it's at now, it's been a long time coming.
Question about, would we be able to get, because I'm so excited now, with that curriculum piece that that's student-facing, or honestly, curriculum, but there's that, where the students can monitor and realize, and is there something that we?
There is, yeah, well, once.
More than, now that we're getting again towards a.
Yeah, I'll ask, so much for.
Yeah, it'd be great to just get a sense of what now, what's that, as well.
Yep, we'll get that, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Talk about the spaces that are going for electric vehicles? And how that, like, it gets, do teachers get to park there?
So that's the next phase, that's not actually Select. They told us they aren't the ones putting in the charging stations, so though we haven't been updated on that phase yet.
Okay. Do we have to keep that separately, or is that still part of the?
I'll find out. I don't want to speak out.
We have. But.
We have a meeting next week, I believe, and this week, so it wants to be next week, we'll follow up on that. Thanks, good question. We had our first safety subcommittee of the green building building. It's a tough sentence, right? So it's now getting interesting, and we have a follow-up meeting tomorrow, so it's really about the safety of the new building. What materials are used in the entrance, which buildings are locked, how, sorry, which doors are locked, how they're locked? What fog system? What cameras, is it integrated? All of that, so we just had our first meeting, and there's representation from the police who can fire in addition to a couple of parents that have some expertise within safety, administrators, and we follow up meeting tomorrow to discuss some locations on the same time.
Where, where, where you recommend, and want to have some type of public presentation at the school committee or some of that? And I guess figuring out how much you want to share publicly, you know, you know, it helps to have an executive session for other school members for some of the other things that maybe aren't, but I think it would be helpful to get a sense of.
Yeah, we'll have, I think it makes the most sense to have.
Once, once some of it's.
They have, not only them, but it's their consultants. So like some of the things we talked about that, I think they talk about in all buildings now, which they did years and years ago, the type of class that they use.
Right.
Like there is, you know, so, which leaves that, but you know, that there's different layers that you can put on. So we will certainly invite them, we'll figure a little further, as though, and they can probably even invite their consultant, which will be fun.
And yeah, I think that we've obviously had a lot of feedback about, you know, school safety, other real works that we've got, and so I just want to make sure that. Just.
Yeah, absolutely.
Same, gentlemen.
But I haven't seen it, so.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll, so, um, so the teachers, I know you talked about it, I mean, you said it's accurate, the only update that I would say they, the Huntress associates met with the planning board, and they, that was Tuesday of this week, and they received a unanimous five to zero vote to move in terms of peer comments. There were some additional comments made, few conditions applied to the project, the addition of additional shade trees were practical now. Perfectly acceptable, additional handicap access upgrades at the parking area adjacent to the boys' and girls' club, which he went over with the subcommittee. That's really a small.
A curve, like they're just basically bringing to use the. Okay, so, the boss, like, the wheelchair, like, yeah, because right now, the way they cross over, and then if there's a, maybe a wheelchair, it goes in, like, crossover the, we're crossing the one now, like, yeah. And so they're, they're, one or two is like, go against the part, yeah, instead, so like that last. They don't have a wheelchair, right?
Right. And then the last thing was DP, DPW approval of utilities, handicap, upgrade, curb cuts, and tree planting, and that is totally acceptable because Justin, that trade board. So he's involved in the conversation. So Huntress was very satisfied with the way that, and as was the plan. That was a productive.
I wanted to mention, just because I know that this project has a lot of interest to it, I really want to make sure that Chuck and Greg, that we always have some type of town representation at those subcommittee meetings, so if Justin's not able to attend, you know, I don't know who, might be, maybe him and Greg can swap off, but I just know that for the SLU board, I know it's really important, I want to make sure that they don't feel that they're not, they don't have a voice or some at that, those conversations, because I did get the sense of the, the last kind of group that they felt like there was maybe some information that wasn't all disseminated in the best way, and I want to make sure that that's, that that's not a sense.
Shouldn't, I'm checking, right?
Okay.
All right, well, yeah.
Oh, yeah, did you, might have mentioned about the bathroom?
Oh, yeah, I, I can't, absolutely, so Huntress associates added did a modification on the concession stand, which is great, but it doesn't involve the footprint at all. He was able to take a look and steal some storage space, real storage space to be a family bathroom on one side of Sessions Building. With that building, that has a session that one in it, and so it would be, and so now there's a family bathroom, and there's still storage in between the bathroom, there's storage here, so they were dead at the town, Dustin, again, so it would be happy that that modification, it didn't change numbers of toilets, so we're still within code, and it's a responsible add to the building without any.
So it took away one of the. No.
It just, no, that.
Actually, yeah, so it didn't, it didn't substitute for one, but what it does, I think it came up with the planning board as well, when at the first meeting they had, they had questions about, I think, we restroom, so, so they were going to plan on having like a changing table, man, so they're going to do it instead of this family restroom. And then the other thing too, which came up from feedback, that I felt was really very good, first one, Chris was listening, is that if we wanted for control perspective, we could, or whoever, could close the other restroom, which is like classes, and you just have like a stall that might be, so it doesn't have to be that all of them are open all the time. So we're trying to think about maybe it's or, or why it might just be that maybe just the family restroom will be open, and you know.
Which is possible, yes.
Yeah, so it gives a lot of little flexibility, and again, it's also the footprint that did come to expand in the designs, when they would get them back, they're going to also have a whole percent of fifty, that might reduce the size of that session, but I think it was like two toilets and, and just like that.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Brian. Right, you had one more update. More, right? No, I think you skipped over it before.
Fowler, yes, so of all the good things that we still, our school district, and we still have struggles upon certain topics that are challenging, there was some graffiti, this was earlier in March, so it was like March fourth. There was some graffiti in Fowler and, say, the principal, assistant principal, really handled situation head-on. There's swastikas found on the back of the chair and music and in a bathroom. And what they did, which I thought was strange, I participated in one of the assemblies, if you will, wasn't quite an assembly, but they did it grade by grade, which is like, because it becomes fourth and eighth grade, it's slightly different conversation. I chose in the middle, so I went to the sixth grade one. And the whole grade was in the auditorium, it was not your typical auditorium, so it's a big flat room. And they were divided by classes, and Principal Kenny did a great job of really explaining the history of the swastika, which isn't necessarily bad from what it was, you know, politically way back, but then what it came to me and what it comes to identify with. And they thought just about how that makes, potentially makes people feel. And it was a good conversation, it wasn't a punitive conversation, but it was very clear that it was a harmful term, and the implications now are not appropriate to be using and being used. So it was a good conversation, I felt like it definitely tuned in, especially for sixth graders, and sort of herself scattered around, and they were, they were keyed in on. And it was him, which was nice, it wasn't somebody they didn't know, it was their principal, they were responding appropriately. And then at the end, we did this activity, which I thought was going to be much more difficult than it was. And it was sort of team building, so the teacher of each group has a cup and a ping pong ball. And then you get a cup, and then you get a cup for the circle, we're all in a circle with each class. And teachers were going, you have to catch it with the cup, which when you say that, it sounds like it should be really hard, but for the most part, our kids are very athletic, and our teachers were very good drivers. And the ball just went, and it went into the cup, and it came back, and it went around, I mean, I'm not sure I did it. You know, it's, yeah, it does reminisce of that, if you're, yes, I don't think it had that for the kids. And it was really just that team building, we're in this together, and you know, supporting one another and not hurting people's feelings, that I thought it was a direct, clear way, you know, the conversation, the activity, you know. Mr. Karen Janus was in there as well, it was probably twenty, thirty, twenty, twenty-five minutes. Yes. And it had, I feel like it had a positive effect, but clearly, it's a middle school. This is kind of when kids are, that's, you know, but when they're little in elementary school, they don't really know it, so it doesn't really come up so often, rarely. And by high school, thankfully, they kind of know, hmm, this. Hmm, this shouldn't, shouldn't do this, there are consequences. It's when they're in that age of that, ten, thirteen, in there, it mirrors its head, so it's, it was an opportunity to educate them and work with them. And if. And I don't know, I don't remember off the top of my head, if those kids in those, uh, were actually identified or not. Um, there are other incidences that come up where kids are, I know, there's different consequences, but really in middle school consequences, and then also, um, activities and education. They're big on making sure kids learn from their mistakes, and that's what it is, say, we have good kids, and they make mistakes, there's consequences, learning, and we move on.
Well, uh, thank you for, for that, I know. Has been a lot in middle school in particular.
Yep.
At, at those schools, uh, you know, teaching them. A joke, uh, it feels clearly it's not a joke, but I think that they'll put the, just where they're. Learning that a little bit of art, um. Which is, which is gonna be hard, and I know that at some points. To be successful, oh, my needs and senses, layout. Uh. I don't know, maybe it's a follow up. And if there's any or suspensions or things like, uh, is the policy that the student. Would not on school property for that period of time, and I guess the reason why I'm asking, I know that we have a lot of. Like, uh, town sports and stuff that use our facilities, and I just wanna make sure the messaging is very clear for the parents. That, uh. You know, if unfortunately it comes to a point where there is disciplinary action that. And your child can't go to school, they shouldn't be on school property as well, uh, I think there's been some conversation with parents that. Have shared with me that they've been kind of confused about. How, and I just, I, I know it's hard to be in a small town, but I, I don't, we don't always see how our, we wouldn't want, we wouldn't know what the boys and girls club, they wouldn't know, but I just wanna make sure parents are aware of that.
Absolutely, follow up on that, yeah.
And, uh, I think well, we were worked with trying to really educate students. As possible. I already have a, we had rushes to the support. Right, and everything that he listed was.
There's not really good news for, by the way, but that's my little, um, world paper addressing it.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Yes.
The lessons I mean to learn is a place which you can, no, no.
Sorry, yeah, um, so my one question is. Um, I remember a couple of months ago, applying, one of us go despite. Um, we were told that Green Meadow was doing responsive classroom, I think, and that for social emotional behavior and such. But it didn't seem like that was happening in Fowler, um, because it sounds like a lot of the issues tend to be like fourth and fifth grade, what the sixth grade. Is there, do, do those grades need, uh? I think, I think the work to address each individual incident is great.
Yep.
But I'm wondering if those grades need some widespread overall support with behavior and social emotions.
Yeah, I think they have, and I think they are using response question, they can be really especially important, they pray.
Okay.
Um, based on recent events.
Okay.
So I can, I know that, I just read a mail from. Out there.
Okay.
Within.
Okay.
And I think that there, there were extra like in the wind, that they were still having such push at like. More SEL stuff, I don't, I don't remember.
I wondered, would those teachers monitor support for that, um, if the Green Meadow was getting. Uh, support limit, I wonder if those teachers also could use support.
Surely.
Yeah.
Brian, you good? All right, thank you, so now we are moving on to the high school program of studies. Now, yes, very exciting, we printed with the words.
Want anything else, we can be the same. And if you don't, it's okay, I'm just giving you the offer.
Do the committee members all forgot to teach us, that's what I assume.
Yes.
Yeah, then.
Good world.
So thank you for having me, once again, it's program of studies time. Which means that the students are taking their classes. The students actually have asked your parents linked in all the documents that I was in home. To choose their, um, electives and decide if the level of course to which they've been recommended is the right thing for next year. So this document is a living document, last year we did a complete overhaul. So that this year we don't have to, so there was some editing and updating. My, um, school counseling department, which has now been recognized by the state and the US. For excellent work, went through this with a fine tooth comb, because that's what we're good at. And I think it's pretty correct, but please do let me know if you have any. Um, the first and biggest addition to the program of studies is we now have the vision of the graduate. Instead of our competencies. So right after the front page, instead where we used to have the vision and competencies, we now have our, um, core values. Our vision statement and our vision of graduate, these are can statements, skills. And what the students are being assessed on in senior project. They are the capstone skills that your students will be learning all through their education, they will be introduced in the freshman courses. Particularly the freshman capstone class. They will be gone over in vision work by the school casters. In each grade, and then they take a full year graduation requirement, senior project, and, and, and these are the skills upon which they will be. We've done some language changes to the computer science pathway on page ten, but we haven't put them in yet. Because Mr. Synopoli and, uh, will be interviewed tomorrow by Desi. To find out if we are ready to be designated an innovation pathway in what they call information, but we call computer science. And we have our fingers crossed that everything is perfect, but because we're so far in the process, even if they say not yet. It's just a little bit of a wait, and that designation is coming. And, um, right after it, number three, the, um. Preliminary language for business pathway is now in the program studies, because in the fall during the open period. We will be presenting our application to Desi to have our business deck of program recognize us as an achievement pathway. So hopefully next year we'll get an interview for business. Um, applied chemistry, so currently this year and last year, my two years, we've only been offering chemistry to all the juniors CP for honors. And the, some of the students are really not enjoying it, and there's been a lot of feedback. That some students don't plan to major in STEM. And really feel like doing all that old fashioned chemistry now. Is just a slog for them, they don't enjoy it, they don't feel like it's correctly, uh, connected to college and career. So Mrs. Lerner, our wonderful chemistry teacher, has an old course that she used to offer at the CP level. And she's willing to, um, sort of amp it up a little bit, because we don't want to close any doors. So they, these students who today don't want, they get to college and want science very much. So they will still get all the fundamentals of chemistry, but with a lot more hands on, a lot more applications. It actually, um, includes a lot of organic chemistry, things like kitchen chemistry. Which generally you don't cover in your first year of college chemistry course. They will get those cool, interesting topics that the straight college chemistry classes do not come. So we're gonna bring that back by student demand, but we will absolutely be keeping an eye on the outcomes. I think you've been hearing a lot about the UMass Lowell Spanish class, it has a name now. So at least the first semester does, which is an introduction to literary analysis, I believe. And it will be taught entirely by in Spanish, so I'll do a little language tweet with your permission. And that's included in the program of studies, and our rising seniors from Spanish immersion can choose it. There are first ever rising seniors, and also, um, Spanish speaking students can choose it if Mrs. Adams finds that their language skills and. Literary skills are high in, they certainly can opt in. So I know we're interviewing a visitor from Spain next week, who might potentially be international student for us. And perhaps that student. Maybe, but it's a possibility. So those are the big changes and they're all possible. And if you have any questions?
Well, Mary, absolutely, thank you, um, for all the hard work on this, and we really appreciate Mrs. Lerner. Um, going outside the box and really, you know, trying to grab those kids. Um, so the UMass Lowell Spanish, is that a remote class or do the kids have to go?
No, it's so wonderful, a professor is coming, uh, two days a week. And then the other days of the sample is sad. So she'll be sort of like a teacher as a teaching assistant, so they'll be getting that support from their beloved teacher. But a professor will become.
That was phenomenal.
They just stand family.
Right, it's the, the community has been the problem, asked.
Yep, and if they choose to attend UMass Lowell, they will be one class short of a completed minor if they got a high enough score. On the two A's they've already taken, and we have a nice little cohort of students who follow each of that, and very much. I'm hoping they all go into teaching, because we really Spanish by the teachers.
Oh, um, the, uh, they have other classes, they maybe they just continue to do what they're interested in, maybe in that or.
Well, that's an excellent question, so we have run a tough. Spanish class offers every year for students who don't feel they have the confidence for the big Spanish wing. And Mrs. Adams feels confident that she can either convince or cajole. Those students to take a Spanish wing, so this will be her third year teaching, she's a certified and now experienced teacher of the class. And she's a hundred percent confident that everyone who's successful in Spanish for honors can take the Spanish one. They may not get a five on the exam, but that's okay, they'll get the excellent experience of taking a deep class in a language based.
And how about, um, the other changes that are, are being made, is there any, any other classes that. We were determined not to be popular or necessary?
Nope, there'll be one fewer section of CP chemistry. Um, the business classes are currently in place, there will be tweaking and moving because, um. Mr. Soto, Ms. Murphy and Mrs. Felipe teach those classes, and they weren't a hundred percent satisfied with the exact order. That they have the classes in, so it'll take a few years before they stop. How they want, but, but they're all going still.
And then, um, so financial literacy, it, it seems like there's been a lot of conversation, you know, in the news about financial literacy, the kids, I'm, they're not high school. With the, the basics that they should have, did we before have just a semester of financial literacy, and it's now a year? And how long have we been offering that?
Hi, um, maybe, do you hear a chance?
Mine just.
Okay.
It needs COVID, so it's at least five or six.
Perfect, okay, that's great, yeah, I knew, I knew we were into it, I just wasn't sure about, um, the intensiveness, that's great, um. And I think that, or they, I just had one little tweak, and, and I don't know, um, in the program of studies on page seven, it talked about finance, that we had to pass one course. But then I think it was the student handbook that said that you could either do art, music, or communication, so.
Those are all finance, yeah, 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 so I, do you want me to have that, the parentheses, so.
How they consistency, yeah, that was, that's it, otherwise it was fantastic, thank you so much for all the hard work, thank you.
Um, my only question, I guess, that too, is, um, is there, was there no way that honors, an honors level with hands on, if they could go also? It's just because it's so much.
Yeah, those students take, the STEM headed students. To take the full year of the inner organic. If they are to be successful, A in biology if they choose it, or B in chemistry, those are very difficult STEM classes. And Mrs. Lerner has many, many years of data showing that students who take her, um, honors can. Feel a hundred percent confident, even if they haven't taken. In their freshman year, um, in organic chemistry class, when they get to college, she kind of has a down to the science. And most of those students are absolutely still at the door open, or possibly studying a science.
Um, and is there anything else I need, your program, so this is what I told, um, is there anything else you wanted this? Call out if. Others are also all grades, they're all changes, is there anything else that?
Senior project, I'll talk about it as, uh, as much as you. I wish that when our schedule to have a senior project course in each grade, a capstone course. I think we may, we're thinking about maybe rebranding the whole day, our vision of a graduate program. And we're going to talk to the middle school about seeing if they want, cause you know, we're all doing my cap together. If they might be interested in co-branding, so that students actually in sixth grade start the vision of the graduate.
Well, they do like science, uh, I know last year, a couple of years ago, they have that. When they do a project with, uh, chappers, they last, and are, and they, and they go in and parents might, it's kind of like this. Well, they work on this a lot, and I, I always thought that it was very much, I was so happy that it started again, so, but, but I was, it's very similar to kind of. On the, uh, oh, the high school version, um, but like kind of starting that way, really, you know, on projects for a lot of showcase. Uh, so it'd be great if there's something. Happen.
I cannot sense the number of, um, community groups who just again and again. Tell us that those skills of presenting and answering questions about one's only word. Are the, one of the very most important career skills that are lacking in graduates from schools that don't.
Off skills that don't, you know, happen early or not, or they, they're still on, I think that'd be great to, to do that, so.
Right, so since Miss Falconer asked, I will grab just a tiny of a senior project. Um, while me as was in the building for the third day, um, yesterday. Ms. Labelle and Ms. Fernal, one of our school casters, were presenting at Worcester State to an introductory my cap class. Our, how our vision of the graduate program, our my cap program feeds into our exemplary senior project. So they've actually become sort of part of the regular teaching, other schools who are just. So we have a lot to be proud of.
Sorry, I have one more. Mary, just for me, uh, I think I've been curious about, I haven't had to ask you, it's just, I'm curious about, um, why we do physics in freshman year and then biology junior year.
We do biology, soccer. And chemistry, June, and it's actually, it's actually more than you would think. So the physics first is very simple to explain. Many, many students in ninth grade traditionally took algebra one. And introduction to physics is the projects that go with algebra one. All of those very simple Newton's law projects use algebra one. So, and the formulas are higher algebra one, so it's actually a hands on course. And Ms. Murphy and Mr. Malaxos work together and figure out where the other person is. And try to make sure that they're teaching in a sensible way together. So they, they touch slope and kids run little cars down ramps. So they touch slope and kids run little cars down ramps. So, but we want more hands on.
Okay, so then so physically put there, but the mind of the algebra one and the chemistry.
And the state offers and introductory physical science and and our students are passing in in Jordan more than past by health at some schools when biology.
And then biology and chemistry is there for reason why not why not to be why not those?
That's the traditional order biology. And most users across the nation are.
Um, I'm super excited about the five monster that that's gonna be fantastic. Um, and first, the the Spanish is also super exciting. Um, I did want to know whether or not students who already chose it, there there are persons or that was coming up?
They um chose their electeds a few weeks back. We had a board of open emails and the weekend all at least for parents and the school counselors were in every age class in the building helping students put their own pictures.
Okay, so just electives, not the actual.
Yeah, the teachers do their recommendations for the portal. So we recommend if you don't agree what you see in the portal, and this is good for the public. Um, please call the school counselor. If you don't know who the counselor is, call the office. We'll be very, very glad to help you. And that is nothing is written in stone at this. We haven't even done our tasks. You're very welcome.
Thank you for this. I also wanted to say thank you. I heard that last year changed things so that kids that were getting uh academic support could still move elective or two year. And um that was huge for my child to be able to get interested in school and pursue the more freedom side of things. Um, kind of similar with different pathways. How many of those are in the academy support? Trust me, or and I can have that kind of support at the same time.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Absolutely. Um, okay. And we have accommodations in place for people learning English, people who need academic support. They're open and if someone we haven't thought of yet wants to pay them, we'll be prepared.
That's wonderful. I love those programs and it's always like really like even at me that we have great programs some kids can do. So that's really wonderful.
Well, something that I have very open to ops to do, something we're working on behind scenes as a student is trying to figure out how students who need to have a second language and who need student support can take more of them. Because we feel it's a very powerful equity.
Yeah, and I feel like we can help them think like attendance, like hundreds. Yeah. They want to go to school for communications. Then they're really willing for.
And those those pathways all lead to at least one high paid job that a student could do to help pay for college or even instead of college.
Yeah, and I love the relationship that those teachers have with the kids over that shared interest. Like, uh, they seem to be able to inspire the kids in a different way. And for teachers. Thank you.
Um, I think all my questions were already, so I just want to thank you ladies for your hard work doing this. Uh, the only question I have are our content, which is um getting this information out to our school community and how such a, I I would love this to be shown to the male school families, you know, we can't, you know, create that.
So we were looking for the program of studies type of question. I have much time to find it.
Right, and I know that a lot of students do have it very public on like, so like it but very calm. I would love it. I don't want like fewer clicks. I think these are so, these are things that this is kind of, I would say is a marketing opportunity. So I would say that fewer clicks that will get to this for people who are exploring in there. Um, you know, maybe, you know, do I want my child to be in or do I want my children to go to charter school? Their material is right smack in front of their website and easy to find. And I want to make sure our education is also um as accessible as possible. So I really feel like that way. Yeah, anything we can do to. No, no, but just this is, I would say is this is us, you know, showcasing, you know, what what your child's potential opportunities are in there. And I I think um we want, I mean, there's so much work to do. We're proud of with this and I and I really I would love for, I would love to be sharing it and you know, I you know, with families and you know, at certain times of year, we just had some event to the middle school families, like, oh, this is what's now your child has to go forward to get their planning message in their mind. Um, I think for like the older people in town who you know, voted elections on budget, yeah, with some of them, I feel like we'd be really offended by that, at least then. So I just all that, I just want to make sure that your your work um is recognized by everyone. Who gets uh should.
So do I have your lesson to take the word job?
Uh, yes.
Do we need to vote? I never remember. I think you just, I just.
Not a little tiny thing, if I noticed, um, there was a link in the program of studies to the policy for them.
Yeah, a vision box.
Yeah, um, we are trying to convert all the policies to a different format and such, so it's something we might need to adjust.
Oh, if you think of me and, yeah, Pauline Baby. Excellent. Thank you. Do you want me to sit down back up or? So I am um kind of emotional about what happened yesterday afternoon. Um, we were in a very big meeting with the V S committee. Um, they recognized you. They recognized our community members. They recognized our amazing support staff, particularly our maintenance staff and our custodians who made our buildings so beautiful and have made it like it's brand new. They recognize our counselors, special educators, our teachers, but more than anything, they recognize who our students are and how special they. They, until Wednesday, but an hour before they were putting final drafts in, they were still calming down more groups of students trying to triangulate what students were saying and they they could not find students who don't, who feel not connected, not belonging. They said not, in some schools, it's hard for students to know the name of one staff member. And most of our students not only know the name, but feel close to and feel they can go to at least two staff members. And for many, it's many. They feel like part of a community. They feel that they are cared for. And they recognize how hard everyone is working to care for them. And I could just go on and on about the athletes they have for our wonderful, good behaved children. And every one of them told me how jealous they are and how much they would like to come work.
It sounds like they were trying to coach when we were talking about all of our staff at uh the meeting or they were like.
They really want to come here and and they were trying to figure out specialist sources. And I've never been in that position as a principal before. And for that, I have to thank Mr. Kerragene. He left you. But they said, you know, they gave us some tasks to do over two years and Chuck got started on them and I picked up the end of his coattails. And of course, you know how hard overhogs and our counselors, the state benefits for their excellence and the steering committee. I just, I could go on and on. But I'm so very, very proud to tell you that we passed all our foundational foundations. We were found to have the four Cs. On her. And for our priority areas, they gave us permission to continue working on three of them. The three that I had highlighted for you. And they said the counselor stuff finished the fourth, which I I'm the um creation of tier two services so that students who need just a little help for just a little while have places and people they can go to. And I want to thank you for allowing us to switch staff around and have additional adjustments. Because it's making world. So we will continue to work on our vision of the graduate and articulating that into our life. And making sure that all students are being assessed for their canned skills. So that every major graduate is assured that list of skills and those are non-negotiables. And anyone who said they went to Maynard A school will know the opinion of that space. We are going to continue to work on our curriculum maps. And we are going to um crosswalk them with the My Cap curriculum. So that we see where in each class, the teachers are reinforcing the skills of the vision of the graduate. And we are going to keep working on our instruction. Our curriculum is sound. But we need to teach all students. And while they recognize uh the incredible variety of higher class and unbelievable number of choices for students who really know what they want to do. They saw, as we do, that students who are a little confused about the future need instruction that is inclusive. And they are glad we've gotten started, but they're going to give us some more ideas on how they work. So that every single major is seeing that. Not only feels they belong and that it's fun and they're part of the community, but also feels I'm being challenged. And I'm learning a lot, but my teachers helped me. And I know we're not there. So, thank you and thank you.
I was gonna start mine. So I'm glad you told that. I was like, where did the tissue? The fabric is there. The fabric is there. So really appreciate everything.
No, same. I said it because it's incredible, especially given that you just came away very, very recently. And so I did. Um, so I think that the fact that both artists recently together and hit the ground, it's such a strong passion that you're able to accomplish. And I do, I do remember they said, we met with them, they how much they appreciate our students. So that's, that's, that's.
Well, yeah, I'd like to thank you for all the courage. Where all of our stars with, you know, how much work of put into, I think especially how you were able to tweak some of the offerings this this, especially this year. Um, that is really helped a lot too.
Just thank you. It's exciting to hear. Um, I think what keeps it exciting is given the transition and the situation um and COVID and everything else, that doing so well indicates that it's really, the positives are really embedded. Like, it's not a fluke or this group of kids or a particular person, but uh that's lasting and positive.
Um, just to get clues to everyone for, I know it's a lot, a lot, a lot of hours to. I'm just curious on some next steps uh to be get our our final report.
In a few weeks. And next step after that is we get a chance to edit that before and ask them to correct any errors. And I'll see the action areas and create some, perhaps right away for us to start working on. So the work is continuous. And I actually, I don't know if you took a look at our improvement plan, but the steering committee, we actually went into the future already. Yeah, we already have some steps mapped out for this spring because we know where we want to go. The vision is there.
Uh, do we, should we expect then at some point, maybe in late spring to get another other, I guess, update or of what the report is? You know, I whatever you guys, you know, just you know, I think it'd be great to.
We can upgrade your circle. The next step after that means that they, that it goes to the committee for a vote. Okay, for our accreditation or taking. Which I feel okay, actually, but actually very nervous. And um.
What is that?
So there's two meetings. There's one and two. And they are hoping they can get it onto that one. But realistically, it'll be there October, November. But I can keep prime up giving and need.
Yeah, so I think the things that I, for me, I would certainly the report, final report, not just getting understanding what are that, that, what are what action steps that um are formulated from there and then um.
And you'll see them in my school. Oh, because we'll definitely be cooperating. School council is fully on board with the vision of graduating. And we're going to be enmeshing that into the school.
Um, and then if there's opportunities to use the report or renovations and to again, you know, share with our community in some fashion where appropriate, I would certainly want to make sure that our, uh, you know, where we find a place to do a press release when we get our final letter and our final report.
Press release, sending copies of that really, sending copies to mention.
So, yeah, that's how I want to launch those. So, yeah, thank you. Wonderful. That's what I was um looking forward to. So thank you for all your hard work. Yeah.
Thank you. You have a very swag. Very tired of school effects. Yes, and then into Spirit Week. So I'll be there on Sunday. Oh, I heard Sunday sold it up to you. I saw a little bit of it. Too nice to go to a little tonight.
Thank you so much.
Very much.
Thank you.
Hey, now we are moving back to the D I status update. And that's.
That's me.
Okay, okay.
So I shared with you Earl late last week um the update. So I won't, I'll highlight a few things on it for you as opposed to reading the entire thing for you sort of. Um, so we, I'm very happy that we are still focused on meeting on a committee. Um, we have staff, we have parents, we have a really dedicated group uh who's been working on that, both people within the system and within the community. Uh, so I tried to divide it into different categories and give examples of some of the things that we throughout this year. So if we look at curriculum enhancements, I mean, you can see the C K L A meetings. Uh, they're from a diverse cultural perspective, which that's one of the reasons we chose that particular curriculum. And so on, a another piece of of that, we started E T Spanish literature course this year, but like that's expanding this year. And we just heard about the program studies. And several teachers this year chose as a smart goal for themselves, including diverse cultures in their curriculum. So it's really spreading not only from choosing, but then adding a higher level class at the high school and then having teachers sort of embedded in their personal goals here. So just an example. Uh, professional development for educators. We have several members, including myself on the leadership team, participating in the foundations, one of the equity in action, uh, learning series. The foundations want equity in action, learning series, learning series for district leaders and teams. If six people participating in that, and that's the in-person sessions are fabulous, like. Probably some of the best P D I have had on the topic. The online ones are a little more of a struggle because you probably just appreciate. The same level of conversation doesn't necessarily happen on the meeting than it does when you're sitting at a table. But it continues and we've been doing that all year and it's, it's helpful, really, really helpful. We, as part of that, we have a coach who comes and works with us and we just bring up topics, brainstorm and see, is this. Actionable or after we do our research, is it not? Not something. So it's been really quite exciting. We have people participating in distorted justice trainings. We have UDL, which we started, we kind of got lucky, so we used some of our extra money. To, to bring in. UDL training to all staff and we started a search few and then we morphed it into classes that anybody could pay for professional development. Paid for by the district and we had a lot of people taking classes specifically on understanding, understanding UDL and design a lot. Regaining the gap was one of the courses. So that excited, one of our administrators took another N P Y course, the equitable educator strengthening your lens. And you can tell this is just really connected, especially the UDL. Course that's connected differently, yes, because they can teach all this, so it's nicely aligned. Student support service, there's a lot of very specific things on there. I mean, one of the things that we've done to support our students is really maintain the fitness. That's been really, really beneficial to the district. Especially when somebody like to say it allows our to continue with professional development and it doesn't put us in a situation where somebody has to go from building to building. Or we, and we do, and if we need to call service to try and get some student nurse. It's hard as this to get a professional, but it's something first, so those are just that, we built. So that's really been beneficial. And we are able to hire a part-time air professional at the high school to support our multiple students, that's been helpful as well. We also have somebody in a very similar role for the Spanish elementary schools, so it's been important right now. So just those levels for, and there's a lot of various specific. Community engagement, again, our D E I could be a good example of that, we engage with it. It has teachers, administrators, representatives from the castle of the education Commonwealth project. And parents, quite frankly, are really active on that. We've done our data equity walk, but we tried to do it a different way and I. And I do feel like more people saw the information, I not be comfortable saying we necessarily got more direct feedback. In doing it this way, but I don't think it was a step backwards, I think it was, it was a small step forward. And the next step will really be to help figure out, how do we get more feedback from more people on that data? I definitely. I'm hopeful that more people saw the data, talked about the data, so that was a good one. We're excited about the surveys, we're about to do surveys with students and staff this month. And parents survey, we have a meeting next week, that survey should be going out at the end of this month as well. So, and that, that's exciting for probably one of the few schools that I think allows. What I would say is that our survey is really well crafted, really well vetted, approved with the support of the education project. The backing flow. And the committee is people that are really well versed in surveys. We've taken a really hard look at that and made suggestions, recommendations, so. It's taken a while, or maybe a little bit longer and just, oh, it's good, we're sort of set up, see, we'll get to really make sure that we're asking the right question. Way that you can get patient back. Actually, it's representation of that committee. As I said, it's really strong parents, so and, and staff. There's monthly communication with the special education parent advisory council. And a part-time trilingual family liaison has been hired to facilitate the partnership with multiple families and it's really been beneficial. We haven't had that in the past, my knowledge, so that's really exciting, being able to be. Diverse faculty recruitment is really a struggle of, and I think it's for everybody, somebody. Had the bullet that really, since we, you know, we all, we get, because we talk about it all the time and it's been talked about for years. You know, in education, as you probably know, everybody posts, they post internally, they post externally, they turn in school spring and people know you look on school spring. Firstly, I've tried other agencies, if you will, to get minority applicants. And they were not overly successful on a lot of it. But where do people want to work?
It's really love to reach out and prove. Physically.
Where do you want to be then, where do you want to? It's, we're not ignoring it. One of the nice things, and this is kind of interesting, that a lot of our staff at each building is pretty international. And you can see the different countries, I mean, many of the countries are representative. From Puerto Rico to Spain to Scotland to the Netherlands to Russia, well, there's a wide range where our staff is from. So we continue to work on that. But it's certainly a work of progress. Student led initiatives, it was a problem, more exciting things, and I think you heard from Principal York, just our students have a. Now, high school students do. I mean, especially if you tend to be a high school, it'd be a little more. Just driven in, in sense by administration. Except for our students, I think have a lot, a lot of agency. Fowler brought in a guest, a guest speaker recently to talk about life challenges and how his background, the speaker's background. As she brought up before. Heard about another speaker today, right, an opportunity to see as well. Your status. And I hope we bring him back for the younger kids and follow, I think his message. And his message was talking about this thing, if he used it time and time again in his presentation, like, you need to be aware of what you're saying, what you're doing, what you're posting beautifully now with, et cetera. That's going to drive your future, so. So, I mean, that's just.
Fowler right now.
Right, absolutely. During the holidays, Fowler had students bring in slides representing their family holiday traditions and look for 50 different slides up on the television, social justice roundtables. Peer leaders are working on a pledge to establish and maintain an inclusive school culture, and that's more like the high school and then have other clubs sign it and advise a way to contribute to that. So there's a lot of. What I would say, student wants and need, and we fortunately as a system are a little voice of what I'm. I mean, so like the volleyball club started the high school and that tends to be, in this case, students of multi-level backgrounds. And in other places. That's all, starts the bottle of volleyball teams. We have high school students participating in exchange to Spain and Germany. We're doing the national dinner again this year, so there's a lot of really interesting diverse opportunities for us. Oh, we just talked about that, yes.
But it starts at. At dinner and then.
That's happening. And then equity and access to resources, one of the things that. You know, you recommended, you pushed for and ordered where students identified as free or reduced will not pay, and if we keep starting this, that's just a very clear example of how we try to support all. So I think we're, we're making a lot of progress in a lot of areas, we'll continue working on that, we'll be getting data in the future from our surveys. Give you a note.
No, I just, the restorative justice training, I know the Ed Foundation sponsored this, but at some point. When it come with, I'd love enough presentation by all that. Their thoughts on it and that, it was some professional development, page the second page. Yeah, just at some point, because I know it's early.
I know all those versions, I remember the talking, I was putting it, I'd be like, very excited to have it.
I know it's a multi-year process coming to.
But yeah, so maybe she might.
She can, I think she'd be. I'm gonna give a quick update, we'll be there and.
That would be phenomenal, yeah, and then the peer leader piece, I mean, anytime again that we can. Yeah, you know, encourage our kids to. To be proactive, I just love, love that piece of, yeah. The, but, and then I just had a. The acronym one, you didn't know what, on the third page, the student support services, not at the bottom, S B I R T, what does that stand for?
It's S B I R T is how people say it, I don't remember. But every district in Massachusetts now has to interview students and ask them about substance abuse, sorry, abuse. And of course, the students are entirely.
So it seems for screening, brief intervention and referral to treat. In the part of media.
All right, I've heard of it, it's, yeah, yeah.
There's a, there's a protocol that all schools follow, songs to script. You, we probably do have a, a very, very small number of students who are kind of. I don't know how you're ready for treatment if they're in some difficulty in mold indicate, but. It's a very artificial process. Sure we get.
I was gonna say.
Wantness from the.
Right, I think, well, I don't want to give my link to pet students who, you know, who passed away from, and I, and I would wonder like. What is the, what do you gain from that, like, I just can't imagine students who maybe aren't. A place to acknowledge, to open to a stranger.
Right.
At their teacher, how, how active, it, it, just checking the box, which it sounds like it's.
I, I, I think it's.
Data around like the results.
Staff takes it seriously and, you know, he might capture a couple of kids who are kind of ready and so, you know, the resources. But I think if there is a student who's having. Difficulty with substance abuse or, or other armed issues. It's probably going to be through guidance councils in a much more quiet process than, you know. With the. You know. Whole classes are coming down, falling in water, it's. Just doesn't, to me, doesn't have the kind of vibe and it's going to be pretty.
Do they work with the counselors at all?
Counselors, counselors are, counselors and nursing staff do it. And this is a state required activity, all high schools are supposed to be doing it. It's a screen, so like any screener, if. You capture a few people, it's. Well, you know, frankly, if you even capture once to. Probably worth it because, you know, this is.
Data about. How many students have, you know, this program across the state has been out.
The opioid crisis and fentanyl cut into every, basically, it's a street drug. Yeah, again, if you capture a couple of kids, you would be saving. A whole lot of attempts.
I've seen data. So it's not, you know, like saying like this, this much is, it's above consistent.
See, you know, even if some students don't acknowledge in that moment, there was a trigger thought process and. A month or two later, you know, and then it's hard to connect it exactly, but I think that's part of it.
It's, it's a moment. And I think they like met in their head, like this is the person I thought would. Help them identify who voted with.
Just to clarify, there is nobody right now doing sort of justice, they're just on the path to start a good process, right? Yes. If that's what it's looking at. And then I was wondering, just a little bit more about the academic success.
Like, where, where. That will help. Change of it.
I just know that was like Oasis or. No, it's the M H, the major high school academic success, for instance, which three success culture A S C. To address comic absenceism and whether it is to.
Is that that whole grant for? Seven, eighteen minutes one.
I think it.
No, I think we are. Students get lost track. And are in danger of losing credits, but sometimes there's a scheduling modification. They basically receive support to get caught up in court classes in particular, recover as many credits as possible.
Is this part of the, I was asked. From here.
It could be with Saturday, yes, it could be helped on Saturdays, sometimes it's helped out. It's to get kids caught up in danger.
Okay, so it's not like a, it's not a program included in the school. Something that you can get there, so.
Well, it's structured, you know, there's times the students have to report, there's staff members there, the staff personnel work, students. Need to do to get caught up. So it's a program in the sense of here's a way to. Not fail the three classes. And if you've been absent too many times by coming on Saturday or after school, you kind of are earning back. The absence that you have.
But it's not their school average.
No.
And then I noticed that L T A wasn't on here, you had the triangle connector between our, between all the. Communities, but L T A, but after that, I, there's C P A, no, no L T A.
We could add L, so they're doing this presentation. At the next meeting, so I didn't want to steal this, so we have a presentation, but there certainly could be a. Okay, so we have, we have been working really hard. Like, yes.
Just wondering. You mentioned that. You didn't get a full lot of feedback on the data well, and I'm just wondering what kind of feedback are you looking for? I mean, I stopped and I looked at it, but like. I'm not really sure, what are you looking for?
I mean, if, if somebody looked at it and thought like, oh. There's, I saw, I think I see a discrepancy in multilanguage learners or in discipline for girls versus boys or grades for boys versus girls.
We were inviting people to look at the data and say. Basically. What do you see that surprises?
Maybe we could clue and better articulate what we're looking for.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe that's. Think we try not to, but we could do that, we tried not to. Sort of create a box that they just don't like and tell them what to look for. Sort of like Chuck said, look at the data if you have a question about us. But maybe providing a couple like that, especially for benefits, we'll get a little more. Absolutely. Good question.
Oh, so I don't have a lot right now, but as far as the data equity walk, well, I appreciate having this all outlined here in this format, organized this way. As far as the data equity walk, I like that the data reach more people, but. I actually really liked the discussions that were had when there was a separate one in the library. I found that really helpful to like spur different ideas and stuff, so I wonder if there's a way we can combine them.
I mean, I think we didn't do it, I don't, we chose not to do that, it's okay.
Yeah. But for the people who did come, it was great, they just weren't meant to, a lot of work, yeah, I know.
Agreed, and so I think we will look at, you know, is there a way to, to do that? If you want.
Yeah.
Good point.
And then was there at the Thanksgiving presentation that was going to happen? This past fall with the fourth graders that were that play last year?
I will follow up with you, I know that Principal Lugo and Principal one question worked really hard trying to arrange that last year, that didn't happen. Not for lack of pride.
Yeah, but I thought it was going to happen in the fall, but I figured it would have been on here if it happened.
I will follow up, I don't know.
Right now. And one, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate what the curriculum. And the curriculum selection, how we're, the approach of that is to it, which I know is. You know, a couple of years ago, necessarily, it was, it would come a long way, but being able to, you know, have a. A team that does it that way, I just wanted to think that we are even looking at, you know, the map as we're selecting it is. How is this? How is, how is this, you know, with the diverse, the materials and all that, so I thank you for that. How is, how is this, you know, with the diverse, the materials involved in that, so I thank you for that. Um, the PD for staff, it would be helpful to understand, like, uh, for instance, the O G. I know that's, I know a lot of these are just, um, like the more intensive or a period of time. How, uh, how many teachers have that have that certified or like at the elementary? Um, middle school, uh, I know that there's O G, I don't know if it does Wilson. Um, I know maybe we had, um, um, what was it, safe, um? Safety care, I know that all, uh, I think the parents have gone through that, but I don't know if general teachers have gone through that, and that was one of the. Uh, so just things like that, it'd be helpful to see, to know what type of certifications, um, were seen growing. In our different, um, different areas within the elementary school, so, but. We had this many go through, um, I, I, even though that sometimes. Like adaptive devices, you know, and to. So if we can get some numbers on, on that, that would be cool, just to see like how, how maybe. Uh, different, um, preparations are, are teachers are expanded, you know, the work they're doing. And then, uh. Uh, oh, it was kind of the data as well was. Moral great question about like what exactly, I do think for. Non-educated people who don't look at the data very often, I do think they need a little bit of help with guidance on like, because it can keep overbuck, you know, and. So if there's a, you know, I think the idea, maybe some couple of students, you know, questions, like what. Would be helpful to start off with, um. And, and maybe to frame it that way and getting into it, you know, like, these are the, these are the goals that we would like, you know. But I don't know if there's also a way to do it. So I feel like the elementary school, you know, like, like it's not gonna drop off, do like a certain like, hey, if you're able to stay under, um, people have. Yeah, probably like, you know, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of like, breaking it, breaking it up where, you know, we are biting people that, you know, who come into the cafeteria or whatever. Do, uh, drop in, how, you know, after you drop in, so just maybe that might be a better way to, well, you know. Instead of asking them to, to go on a day off, maybe it's just like, hey, stay, you're coming here to drop off, maybe you just, you know, stay like they.
You can totally continue.
Yeah, I, I, you know, just trying to range around and I, I, I don't know. The, the right meaning about it, I think it, it is kind of breaking it up into a couple of different.
Well, I think it's good if we try a couple of different ways.
Cause it's not gonna happen every one night.
Right, but maybe next year it would be good to do, you know, a couple of different ways, cause you're getting different, different groups.
Right, and I, I, I go back to the, you know, where people are, you know, instead of them coming, you know. Where we are, where, where people don't look back at to, and are coming anyway, can we kind of capitalize on, on, on those moments if possible? I don't know, say maybe best for that, a lot of teams set up, hey, you know. You have a lot of people there, I don't.
Just put up the same information, just, you know.
I don't know, I just wanna think about like, where do people come, you're, you're getting a lot more people in there and people that don't.
Necessarily go to some of the other things that, you know, and you're getting people that aren't even from there. And so maybe you might get some other.
And that, that's it, so I, I, I just appreciate, I appreciate this work and I like the, the numbers, it would be good. Now, I've been thinking about, I know the school major thinks about data, uh, understanding how these initiatives, if there's opportunity from like how. How these things are, are benefiting, like, what are the results that we're seeing, um, like, for instance, the nurses about maintaining Ross District, I know that. Um, that would be helpful to just articulate, you know, that, because I know that comes from a budgetary perspective. It's always something that we look at, like, how, what is, I mean, I know what I'm beneficial for, but, um, but, you know, continuity of care. And there's a lot of more, so I think just putting some numbers on, on those, those initiatives to. Um, I wasn't justify as a right word, but it also just to understand why beyond just, we have more nurses. I tell you some of these things, I think would be reflected in, in this year's survey, it's also asked. So that was. Um, thank you for my, you know, so from the survey, I know yours goes to have school families, but I was, they're on surveys for each building and. Uh, sometimes they had more building specific things like about. The meal, you know, or whatever, things that would just try and capture the parent feedback, um, from parents about their child experience with their view. I don't know if there's an opportunity, with, and this, I don't think this is the survey, but how do we get that? So for instance, like. Or buses, you know, things that are part of our children's, um, day to day, how do we collect or solicit that from parents about. Those things on a routine basis like we used to, I think we lost that, like, I, I appreciate, I love the survey that we're doing for the other reasons, but I feel like the personalization of. Their major experience for services or, um, I think, I feel like. This stuff there, I don't have the answer to, but I just was curious and I, uh, we've also this older surveys that we have, library, metal, flower. Um, sometimes they would talk about the, the classes. Uh, but it's more the parent surveys, I was thinking that. I'd be curious to see.
You can think about that, I mean, that may be part of the parent survey we're about to put out, there's a lot of topics.
There, there are at least five dimensions. Parents are gonna be filled out. Late March or April. That's part of what we did.
Right, I, right, I was.
So when, when, when a parent begins to survey, they'll be asked, what? What school does your child go to? So we start owning it right there, this sort of child number one goes. And so, uh, you know, right off the bat, then when we started asking questions about physical plans and other things for the survey. Know what building you're talking about specifically, so the data is just aggregated by building. That's cool.
Okay.
And you also know that this, we discussed in the committee, and I know it's been there, that this is gonna be our first go around. And, uh, we're gonna need to refine, uh, in year two when it's being, well, going forward, so. But I think we're in a good place to get it off the ground. The student and staff surveys, uh, the Green Meadow staff took it. Uh, uh, completed surveys to see, uh, just passed and, uh. Six, seventh and eighth grade students, I believe, took it today. Um, the rest of the students in the district, uh, K through twelve are completing the surveys tomorrow along with the rest of the staff. So we'll have those data sets for the second year, we can start to build trend data. Um, and this year we'll be adding the parents survey, so we definitely wanna get.
Just so you know, ten check fifteen minutes.
Okay, fine, okay, thank you, um, so school taking calls and outreach, I don't, I don't more.
Well, I, um. I created that spreadsheet about, you know, like, P T O stock. Um, and last year at this time, we were, we did, we had done more. Outreach than we have this year, and so I just wanna kind of put it back on radar, radar. Um, that we should probably sign up for stock. So.
I was just looking, wait, hold on, this is like, so, I think, is that your, it's like saying there's no names on there?
Um, now granted, um, you know, I did go to one or two of the, um. The second times that I obviously did nothing here. Um, I'll have to go back and figure out which ones those were, um, but, you know, we're, we're at least trying, you know, to, to hit. You know, one, maybe one of each of the P T Os. And then, you know, I think we definitely need to head, um, the, some of the staff. Um, yeah, stop. And I know at least with the high school last year, they wanted a little more notice. Like a couple weeks' notice of when we.
Get on there, I, I like that we, um, last year, I remember three Meadows Kennedy year, like their last faculty, that's in four, twelve. Uh, maybe coordinate which their, their next dates are, that. Yeah, but, and that would be a better opportunity to do that. And then you can, that might help sign up, you know, it's some, yeah. Sign ups, I think if we had like, maybe two options for each, then, you know, see what, wants everybody, what might, what might work. And then the, the older had sent out updated, yeah, for the staff.
Yeah, uh, so. And actually, those are not, those aren't any.
Yeah, but I, I, the email, I think she said, she said she did last speakers, yeah. So I'll, I'll sign up for. What I, last year was.
Um, well, they only, they only did the first semester, right?
So, so, so that was.
Well, maybe it was, but, it's, um, yeah.
Yeah, no, this is, um, and then we have, there's a little bit, we have a lot of time left, yeah. To have, so we really need to attend the P T Os, is what we're, we're gonna say at this. Alright, um, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah, anything else do we think that we would wanna, I'm just thinking about like.
We did.
Feature, yeah. You know, just, I know we, we talked about the seniors over the summer, possibly, you know, that might be, because just. Going and leading up to the next, just kind of meeting all, I wonder, um, that might be an opportunity to some outreach there. As we get the designs back, well. And we do have, uh, like, or I'll, if I think the joint now or. Yeah, June eleventh. Yeah, yeah, and so. Why, uh, we're trying to do like another, but, more awards, so like, maybe select for. Maybe capcom, then come, like, to, to do another, and I think at that point, like, we will. That would be. So, yeah, so June eleven is when they, uh, Brian. Or Brad, or what, so, everybody, uh, that is. Uh, it was six thirty, do six thirty? Oh, and we do have some of the other things that aren't necessarily outreach, it's just for school committee, uh, Bubba Hill. That is. That's May, six, six, yeah, um, Colleen, if I want to. Can I just register the select middle?
If they need a purchase order, just let me know.
Okay, I think there was an option just to fill the district, but, okay.
That works.
So, yeah, so if anyone wants to go to that, it's a registration, uh, in advance. For, for that, it's like, uh, starts to move on, yeah, so just, uh, as it heads out, we'll register it. Okay, anything else? Uh, and maybe we'll have a separate workshop about our goals, we haven't really actually got our goals. Uh, end up at a certain weather rate today to talk about it, but I think that might be, maybe we can schedule a workshop for our goals. That's. So, uh, I don't, you know, just to say, I'm looking forward to, uh, a lot of. Uh, the place actually next weekend is also the, was it, uh, Rock Ages, uh, Middle School, which I'm looking forward to them. As well, so I, I'm really, really excited for all of the stuff that we're, we're doing, and then the others been nice. So, a lot of these, uh, we excited for, um. I, I know that, and, and maybe I'm just too, but so at our. Uh, at our budget sub meeting, Mary and I went to, there was a presentation, uh, about, I mentioned this at our last school meeting, but. My fair, um, about, um, data for budgetary purposes, and I followed up with, uh. With Chris DeSova, just to understand, you know, how. This luck board is, so it was presented by Jeff, this luck board is, is gonna be using the data, and so. Didn't sound like there's a much structure to, like, for that yet, so I think there's opportunity for us to revisit, to make sure that the, the. Comparable towns are ones that are from an education perspective, or ones that we do agree are comparable. And, um, that seemed to be things that we kind of, and they didn't talk about it at the last meeting, so. Anyway, there was, there was room there, I just wanted to just follow up, because I know I learned it last time, it seemed, uh, it was a very. Very deep presentation, but I weren't sure what the takeaway was supposed to be from that, and, um. It didn't seem like it was a, a select board initiative, the board, maybe just a couple of them, a project. So, I'll go, we'll hear more of these all at the next time. And, that's all I. That, oh, okay, I did, uh, I noticed it's a, on the warrants that, just I wanna make sure I was understanding. That the. The P card charges, they're gonna have that bank there, and so instead of. Seeing, so the description will just be super detailed.
Right, the, the, like, we normally do, right, the description will say conference here, so and so attending, so instead of like. Home Depot.
Right, but it'll say, it'll say vendor in.
No, it won't say, um.
That's what I was wondering.
I don't think it says the vendor.
I don't know, that's what I was wondering, because it sounds like it would say the supplies, but I wasn't sure if.
I mean, do you need to know the vendor? Or more, it's more the detail of what's being purchased, that's what we use.
The vendor ultimately tells me like, oh, this is, like, I know, I know the vendors are looking at like, oh, this is a maintenance thing, or, you know, so, I guess.
Description wouldn't say that.
Yeah, yeah, so I guess it'll just be.
There's just so many people that do purchase orders, I don't see it being uniform if we try to push it.
No, I just wanna, let's try and see how it is, and I just, if I have a lot of questions about like, something feels, you know, unclear, I mean, I can go back to old school days. We would have the paper, right, and, and look through that, but I don't wanna make it overly cumbersome, I just wanna make sure I understand. You know, P cards are an area of.
It's new.
It's new, there could be rest, you know, um, and I'm sure we have great protocols in place, but for me, I just wanna make sure that.
And, and the program runs it, mops it down as to what people can actually spend it on.
Oh, good, so they'll, they'll, they have it automatically.
Yeah, certain things like we can do alcohol.
Right, right. Okay, great, that's good to know, alright, so I'll see how those, and if you have any questions, we'll follow up. Um, that's all that, um, I think now, um, are there some mini reports, Mary?
Oh, are we gonna not do the policy or something?
Oh, that was actually.
Oh, that was, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that, okay.
That was probably the older version. That was one of the older versions.
Yeah, nothing, like nothing next, nothing urgent.
Okay, uh Elizabeth? Okay.
Mara?
Um I just have a question on what are we still using the rolling agenda? Because I felt like. Like the. Like the outreach thing, I wasn't sure, like, do I put it on the morning agenda, do we send to you, but I was, I just wasn't sure, so I just, um.
I I know that there's different, like for scheduling, or Brian, you have something, there's some, not all the same thing, so. Um I'll go back and look at it to see, just if there's anything that's wrong, I will tell you, I haven't looked at it probably in a good two months. To be honest, um but I know for a while our agendas were so rapid, imagine adding something on. Thinking like. And I don't know, I know such things that, I know some of the things that we normally would do were happening, like uh. We're we're on our agenda anyway, so I know that there's following, I I I know.
So if we don't use that, any couple of people. Kind of things to, because as we were going to the policy, there were things that said, this committee needs to go yearly on S that we haven't been voting enough. Okay. And I was like, I'm gonna, it's the rolling agenda, so we don't have to vote on it. Um and I was like, oh, I haven't been, there actually hasn't been any S to it since like August. And so we can find out the best place to add, but some of those things that we.
Yeah, flip back and, you know, maybe, probably, you know, I can talk about like, what's the best way, I don't know, I think what happened was we had. Multiple documents and then someone agenda was happening, uh like she starts it and I kind of kicks it over.
And I also have reminded, like yearly reminders set up in the calendar for things that.
That we were, we're talking about like the app stuff right now, and we're talking about.
Um feel like things like stuff like that are established for it every. Yeah, okay. It was like school page, part of the one on something, and I was like, oh, I know that, so, okay.
Um if there's anything like that, that you're finding, I mean, so if it's not on our standing. That we need to build in at certain, like, when is, when if you're seeing something like that, like, share that, like, this needs to happen or whatever. Now, the colleagues added, so we're gonna remember how, how mine are. Um but that would be something that probably would be like not hard coded into a, like a staple annual calendar. That wouldn't be like a rolling agenda. We want to have a, these are the, like, when we do a school choice, that kind of.
The fees.
Not that, no, not the actual amount, the maximum amount that could be held on the account.
You know, that would needed to be yearly, if it would change.
It like literally said it, because I was like, that's weird, why are we voting on? Why do we care what the maximum amount that's allowed to be deposited?
Yeah, the the student activity fee.
Well, this, this is, this is um student activity count.
Count, yeah.
Which is not the fee.
So even though the, the principal was like at school.
Right, well, the high school means.
Yeah. But if I, okay, like give us something, something we're supposed to do.
Sounds like it, then, all right.
Speaking about the annual things, Monday I'll be posting people notes for the budget hearing. Which is the fourth.
Yes, that was. Oh, good work. Yeah, okay, thank you for that. Um let's hope we get some luck. Now, I'll take one person who wants to show up to our budget hearing. Uh I don't know. Anything else?
Um no, just wanted to apologize for not being here in the last few months, and hopefully I will be able to be here now. Um but uh my recovery could still be rocky, so there may be still meetings I can't come to, but hopefully soon. My life will be.
To join us. I think that um, oh, Mary. Budget um. I thought we scheduled our next budget subcommittee meeting, but it's not on our calendar, and I wanted to see if you could check your notebook.
I will do that right now.
That's what I was, I was. Yeah, you could check your notebook, because I think that, I was about to talk about it at the end of the last one, but we cut it kind of short, but I didn't remember we. We didn't schedule it and we just talk about it. Um so yeah, we find, we find dates.
Um six thirty on the twenty eighth of March.
The twenty eighth of March, six thirty. Not the budget, not the.
Budget subcommittee?
Our um.
Oh, our internal?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was wondering. I thought it would maybe, they usually try to do it after the town once, and maybe I'll, I'll look at that. If you don't have it, then we can schedule it, then I'll I'll do it, then maybe put a couple. Four days after that, the town budget subcommittee, because I'll be, you know, do a recap. All right, so. I'll go ahead and move on to the send agenda and be doing. Three different items, the send agenda, we have. Uh two, two, oh, two, we have any minutes. Uh so we just have the two items and now to about the warrant.
Fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four and fifty-five.
Okay, so um. There's two things, so we're the policies, we are going to be, I don't make sure we're on the same page as approached. Um we are going to accept the ones that we have as a first read. We're not approving the policies, from my understanding, I just want to circle back. We're only accepting the policies in there as a first read, because then it will come back for us to. Approve at a second, which could be in a consent agenda, if, you know, if there's no feedback, but just the difference is we're not approving it yet. We're just gonna be consent, you know, accepting the first reading rounds. Yeah, yeah, so um. Um so the minutes are actually after the warrants, well, that objection said it was fifty-two through fifty-six.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, fifty-five, okay, so that objection, I uh that we accept, approve warrants two four dash. We two four zero five two, zero five three, zero five four, zero five five. All right, objection, and now the policy. Um do you want to do it? I think I know. And that's okay, so I think what you're gonna, we're gonna be doing is we're going to be accepting the first read, and you're gonna go down and uh. These, yeah, I'll let you do it, okay. So um. Without objection, we're gonna do not an approval, but um that these are just a first read. Um for A A, A B, A C, A C dash R, A C A, A C A B, A C. A D, A D C, A D D A, A D D A dash R, A B. C A, C B, C B D. I, C C B, C E, C H. C H A slash C H C, C H C A, C H D, C M. D A, D B G, D E C, D G A, D H. D I, D I E, D J, D J A, D J, and D A C. All right, yes, there are, there's the first read. Um just following up, uh because they have, when we go to approve them. We will have, at that point, I'm just actually thinking about this now, we might not be able to follow, because they have to replace, we have to first resend. The other.
Yeah, so in into this week's folder, there was also a document.
Yeah.
The rescinded ones too, just so that you guys.
Yeah, but I was thinking about just more like process.
Yeah.
Um when we go to the, we don't need to rescind them now, because.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, all right, now we will go into. What? Yeah, it's like the ten minutes. So. Yeah, executive session uh to discuss what the bargaining, the features of the speaking and uh. Other chapter uh thirty A, section forty-eight three. And nine two, also to discuss Friday, the preparation of the economy personnel. Bargaining position, no body, there's the players, uh this committee will not encourage um to open session. And we are recording the votes. Oh, roll home it, yes, um third round, yes.
Yes.
Mara?
Yeah.
Florida, yeah, it's Asher Barrett, yes. Thank you all.